I'd like to call this meeting of the Westland City Council to order, please. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by the students from Taft-Gallway Elementary.
All right, who's the leader?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll stand right there, Councilman Hart's gonna be down to talk to you for a few minutes.
Oh, boy. All right, why don't you guys line up here so everybody can see you. Please, Matt. Good lining up. So let me guess, you guys are with the Safety Patrol, is that right?
Yes.
Right on. I was a Safety Patrol when I was in elementary school. They gave me badges. You guys don't have any badges?
No.
They don't need those stinking badges. All right, so we got a list of people here. First of all, I want to recognize, who's Tatum Madkins? There you are. So Tatum is on the honor roll student, and she makes all As. She loves to dance, and she goes to dance class every Friday. Her favorite subjects are math and spelling. We're gonna let you hang onto that for a minute. All right, who's Liliana? Hi, Liliana. Liliana is also an honor roll student. She likes to swim, and of course, she's a safety atta- All right, where's Darren? Oh, Darren. He's out Safety Patrol-ing. Anika? Safety Patrol-ing with him. Jose Perez. There you go, Jose. Jose goes to swim every- you got a bunch of swimmers here, huh? Jose goes to swim every day. He's a good student, and he likes math. What's your favorite math you like? Geometry, algebra, complex trig?
Yeah, me too.
Go ahead and hold it like that, we need a picture in a minute if you want to see it, okay? Trey. Oh, my. It's a lot of Safety Patrol-ing going on today. Denna Jo Ray Riggle. There we go. Another honor roll student. Likes math and reading and helping little kids. My little kid needs help. Can you help me? He needs a lot of help. She likes to go outside and play on her tablet and ride her bike. She's a classroom safety, and she loves her job. All right, Megan, where you at? There she goes. Megan, normally, I'm an A and sometimes B student. Her words, not mine. I am in the 4th grade, and every Saturday I go bowling. What's your average?
Um, like-
Sounds like my average. I don't know what it is either. It's all right, I bet you do a great job. Hold it just like that. Brooklyn. Thought she already knew. Look at that. She's a good student, she likes math, reading, she likes playing and riding her bike and swimming, and it's a broadcast safety at Taft-Gallway. All right, we're gonna get you, and it looks like you're short. So, I am a helping kid, I do singing, I like math, and I'm a safety at Taft. Oh, there's one right there. It got stuck. Ha ha, you thought you were gonna get it, didn't you? Omar. I'm an honor roll student, I also make all As. I like to play soccer out of school, and I like to swim. So they all make all As, they all like to swim, and they're all safety. You guys are just a pair, a group of people, huh? Y'all go swimming, Safety Patrol-ing, and work on your math afterwards, right? Good. There you go, Omar. Where's the principal? There she is. What can you tell us about these outstanding kids?
Oh, they are wonderful. I've only been at Taft a short period of time, but it was easy for me to select them. It was very easy. They make it easy. They're hard workers, and their teachers recommended them, and so, what can I say? They're a wonderful group of Taft-Gallway students.
Well, thank you, I'm glad you brought them in today. Are the parents here today? Can you come up for a photo? All the parents, come on up. You thought you were gonna get in this photo. Kids, take three steps forward for me. You're good at math, one, two, three. All right. Parents, go ahead and line up behind your kids. And we're gonna get a photo for the city. And you and I will just fill in somewhere in the back here. Just look at the guy at the camera. Everybody ready? Here you go. One, two, one, two, three. Thank you. Let's hand it around for these kids. You guys are free to leave, you don't have to stay in here and watch all of this if you don't want to. But you're more than welcome to stay if you'd like.
Councilwoman Green. Councilman Hart.
President.
Councilman Havens is absent, excused. Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Londo.
Here.
President Gabbau.
Present.
A quorum is present.
We'll begin with announcements or presentations. Mary.
Good evening, Councilwoman Gabbau, the entire council, to the clerk, to the mayor, to everyone in attendance. Of course, you know, I'm Mary McLendon from the office of Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. It's always a pleasure to be in the fine city of Westland. I just want to, I know you've heard by now, we have a tentative agreement for the jail. It's been a long time coming, and it has been submitted to the commission, to the Wayne County Commission, but you know, once it gets there, it has to be scrutinized, it has to be analyzed, and then it would go before the commissioners, but they do not have it at this time. The legal department for the commission has it at this time for review. And then, of course, you will be getting reports from Commissioner Anderson as it relates to the community. He'll give you all the fine-toothed details about that contract, once it's ready, but it's not ready at this time. So we're happy about that, that there is a tentative agreement of $533 million, okay? And that's the contract with Mr. Dan Gilbert. So we're kind of excited about that at this time. As a reminder, I don't think I need to remind you, but it is pothole season, and I don't need to remind anybody, I don't think I need to do that. If you go outside, you'll see that it's pothole season. And the number to call, you know, somebody said, "Well, we'll be calling all day," but you should call, because if there's a pothole in the area where you live, no one else may not be able to see that pothole. And we're talking about Wayne County roads. And that number is 1-888-762-3273. And that's your number to call. You can report it if it's at the intersection of Warren and Wayne Road, then that's what you will say to the operator. There is a live operator there to receive your call. So feel free to call, because you don't want not to call, and somebody else did not call. And I want you to know, the trucks are out all day, every day, patching holes all the time, but it may be one that's a major nuisance to you, that you need to get to them right away. Also, the Marshmallow Drive, okay, is coming soon, it's March 30th, from 11 until 12 o'clock. And it's at the Heinz, at the Heinz Park, Nankin Mills location. So be sure to go there, if you have your children, grandchildren, take them. It's a good time for them to run and play, get off the cell phones, off the iPad, off the, whatever they're on, whatever device, whatever tablet, to get outside and play and just have a good time. It's a ball. So be sure to take the children out on March 30th, and from 11 a.m. until 12, Nankin Mills, and that's at 33275 Heinz Drive in the city of Westland. Also, I want to remind you of the coffee hours. Of course, in Westland, it's at the Big Boy location, and it begins at 9 a.m. And you're welcome to go to the other locations, in Garden City, which is at the Maplewood Center, and then in Inkster, at the Western Wayne Family Health Center at this time. That's a temporary location for that coffee hour. And it's a pleasure to be here. If I can take something back to the commissioner, I'd be more than happy to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. We'll move on to citizens' questions or input on the agenda. Citizens will be recognized before the business of the meeting commences to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Citizens are asked to limit their questions or input to three minutes. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Yes. This is McKinney?
Haven't changed the name yet.
Item C on the consent calendar. Approval of bid for utility rate study services. Can you explain what that is? What utility rates, or does that affect the citizens, or what? Item D. Approval of Motorola Solution Service Agreement for the Police Dispatch Centers, Consulates, Consuls, and Operator Positions. Are we outsourcing that, or is that because we're mixed with other cities, or why is it not regular employees? And item E. Approval Motorcycle Lease Agreement with the Police Department. Are we getting some motorcycles? I think it's a good thing if we do. And G. Adoption Prepared Resolution Authorizing the Disposition of Three Properties. And it gives the addresses, and it's with the community block grant. And can they explain, because it says it's programs to the, programs to the adjoining property owners and/or eligible homebuyers, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the quitclaim deed. So is it, which way is it going? Is it going to the property, next door property owner, or to people building homes? And old business, I think this is the same one they had sometime last year, about a small strip in front of apartments. Can you explain if that is the same, or what they're doing? And then on the new business. Item Six. Approval of Special Land Use for Adult Daycare Service, east side of Wayne Road, north of Palmer. Exactly where is that? Because Wayne Road's a pretty busy road, and we're getting too many of these adult care services too close to the traffic, I think. And that's it.
Thanks. Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Ray?
How's everyone doing tonight? I was just wondering, because Judy brought that up too, about the, I do support the Westland Police, but when I saw the $6,000 on motorcycles, that's a year, is that how much they pay a year? How many motorcycles? I'm just curious. Thank you.
Who's on my left? Anyone on my right? Yes.
Richard Graham, Westland, also with Move Westland Forward. Couple items under the vouchers on page two, under Executive. Life insurance policy, or life insurance in March of 2018, for a total of $120.60. Who is that for? What policy? Who's that for? What type of policy is it? Is it a term policy, whole life? If it's term, how many years? What is the annual cost of that? And what is the value of that insurance policy? Is it, you know, half a million dollar, million dollar policy? What type of policy is that? On new business, item four, and the property at 32932 Warren Road. Some items regarding that. It appears that property, and also Stephen Hamed. It appears Mr. Hamed also owns a property at 31030 Warren Road, parcel number 040010603003. It appears Mr. Hamed, or Mr. Stephen Hamed, has some delinquent taxes, according to the Westland's website. Also, in 2015, 17, and 18, has had issues with grass complaints, property maintenance. The interesting thing is, he wasn't charged anything for these, but it looks like numerous complaints on that property at 31030. Regarding 32932, what's interesting is, he finally paid up his water bill. It was thousands and thousands of dollars behind. What I won't necessarily go into, but I have information here of his political donations over the last few years, will count into the thousands of dollars. But if this is, council may want to consider his other property, and maybe get him up to speed of being a good, a good owner of property, meaning with the grass and the property issues that seems to, seem to be there, and also with the delinquent taxes for the winner of 2017. Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone else in the audience? Now, this is, is this on the agenda?
Oh, is this public comment?
Public comments at the end of the meeting?
Oh, sorry, I thought it was a comment.
This is purely on the agenda, comments?
I'm sorry.
No problem. Anyone else on the agenda? We'll close citizens' comment on the agenda, and move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Johnson. There were a couple of questions on item C. Mr. Fasson?
Thank you, Council President. So, item C, this would be a rate study for water and sewer rates, under the scope of the work that was put out by RFP. It identified providing a five-year analysis going forward, so that the city can evaluate its current rate structure, and on a five-year prospective-looking basis. Utility Financial Solutions, out of Holland, Michigan, was the low bidder, and as I said, we had a, actually, while these are professional services, and didn't necessarily have to be bid, the mayor put it out for bid, and we had folks from not only Detroit, Holland, Michigan, Grand Rapids, and Kansas City bid on this dollar amount, on this RFP, and UFS was the low bidder on the work. And this will be charged to the Water and Sewer Fund.
Thank you. On item D, chief?
Yes, sir, through the chair, the dispatch councils are all Motorola products, so this is the annual renewal of our Motorola service agreement. This is for our Emergency 911 Center, and it's a shared cost by Westland, Inkster, Garden City, and Wayne.
Item E, the motorcycles, too.
Okay, and then through the chair regarding item E, that is a motorcycle lease renewal for our existing three Harley-Davidson motorcycles that we have. Us extending this lease actually allows us to save money, not having to switch out the equipment from motorcycle to motorcycle, we're just renewing this current lease for another year.
Thanks, chief. And then on item G, Joanne?
Yes, thank you, through the council president. Two of the lots are, all three are being purchased by the adjoining owner. Two of the lots are not buildable under current zoning requirements, and will be merged with their, the one parcel, and the third may be developed in the future, but not any, not in the immediate future.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting held March 5, 2018. Approval of bid for goose control services. Administration recommended the low bidder, Goose Works LLC, amount not to exceed $16,200. Approval of bid for utility rate study services. Administration recommended the low bidder, Utility Finance Solutions LLC, amount $22,500. Approval of Motorola Solutions Services Agreement for the Police Dispatch Center Consulates, Consuls, and Operator Positions. Agreement effective for a one-year period. Amount $35,062.20, and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute on behalf of the city. Approval of motorcycle lease agreement with the Police Department and Town and Country Sports Center. Agreement effective for a one-year period. Amount $6,000, and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute on behalf of the city. Adoption of land division resolution. Parcels number 56079990062000 and 0063000. West side of John Hicks Road, north of Glenwood, Planning Department number 2207. This land division was approved by city council on February 20, 2018. Last item, approved on the consent calendar. Adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the disposition of three properties. 32233 Ascotacourt, 29006 Powers, and 8618 Beatrice, acquired through the Neighborhood Stabilization, Community Development Block Grant, and Home Programs to the adjoining property owners and/or eligible homebuyers, and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign the quitclaim deed, and the Director of Housing and Community Development will sign the closing documents for the sale of these properties on behalf of the city. Moving to old business. Item one. Approval of proposed rezoning from GAR, Garden Apartment Residence, to CB1, Low Intensity Commercial Business, parcel number 007010599307. North side of Warren, West of Merriman, Planning Department number 2203. Planning Commission recommends approval, and if approved, further directs the city attorney to draft the necessary ordinance amendment. This item had been withdrawn from consideration by the petitioner on March 20, 2017.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman-
Joanne.
Londo. Londo, supported by Councilman Johnson. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Just as a reminder, I know the question came up earlier, was this the one from last year? It was, it was actually a year ago that this case first came before the council. It's a rezoning of the property you see here on the north side of Warren Road, just east of Heinz Park Apartments. Area uses include residential homes to the south in Garden City. Further east, basically right-of-way, Warren Road, right-of-way in Wayne County's jurisdiction. Further to the east and to the south, a variety of commercial uses, from automotive-related to retail, to office and service uses, both in the city of Westland and the city of Garden City. And then here's the property immediately to the west, the Heinz Park Apartments. This is a conceptual plan that is proposed by the developer, consistent with the rezoning that they're requesting. If you recall, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. President, the Planning Commission did hear this at its March meeting of 2017, and did find that the proposed rezoning will provide for a designation that will allow for the development that you see here, that is consistent with commercial zoning in the surrounding area, also that it will result in rezoning, or zoning, excuse me, designation that is also consistent with zoning in the area. It will result in development of the site that would not otherwise be developed under its current zoning designation, and that it wouldn't have any detrimental effects on development trends in the area. The March 20th, 2017 meeting, the petitioner did request that the item be postponed. There were some concerns expressed by the council at that time. The council had asked the petitioner to provide some additional information regarding tenants, potential tenants for this proposed center, if the rezoning is granted, and for other marketing information. All of that information was provided to this council as part of this packet. Again, the Planning Commission does recommend approval of this rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, good evening. My name is Paul Dianzki. I am a partner of Mr. Del Fonzie, who is sitting here. He is the actual petitioner. He asked me to step in for him today. If I could answer any questions, if you have any, I'd be happy to.
Is there any questions from the council? Any discussion? Councilwoman Green?
Thank you, Council President. My question is relative to the, and I'm not sure if this is a better question for Bruce. When he and I discussed this potential development, my concern was relative to the amount of vacant commercial space that we already have existing in the city. We have one brand-new development right across the street that is yet to be filled, so my question was relative to commitments from businesses who would be willing to go in and sign a lease agreement or a long-term contract to occupy that space. And Bruce, there are several commitment letters enclosed in our packet, but they're all either at or approaching a year of age. So my question is, is there any new commitments? Because one of them states that if it was not executed within 90 days, it's void. So I'd like to know, if council were to approve that, who do we have on the table right now that is ready to move forward? Thank you.
Mr. President, that would be a question of the petitioner, obviously.
Sure.
Yes. You're right, they are, they're old stale letters, because we withdrew our petition, and we're bringing it back now. So I would have to get new ones for you, but basically, they're the same people, they're still interested, we're still talking to them. They, if we ended up doing a, basically, a medical office, we have a doctor who would actually be wanting to buy it. We can't really do anything until we have the rezoning, but we wouldn't build anything until we had commitments, because our lender won't let us do any building without written commitments. And that's actually, the lender's letter is in here in number two. So we, we can't do anything until we have the rezoning and the financing in place, and the lender won't let us proceed with anything until we have current commitments.
Are there any other questions from the council?
Yes, well, I think the council should take the same position as the lender. I think it would be a very good development, and the letters that you submitted to our administration are from reputable businesses, but again, they're all at the point of either beyond or approaching a year of age. So I would be inclined to approve it if you can present the council with updated commitment letters that we won't have another commercial property sitting vacant, as we do in several areas of our city.
I understand your concerns.
Thank you.
Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you. I just want to echo Councilwoman Green's comments, I agree 100%. And in addition to that, I have the same concerns as last year when I voted no on this, which are traffic concerns, the lack of city sidewalks, there's just not space to put city sidewalks with the way you have the site plan set up, as well as the other empty strip malls in the immediate area. So I will not be in support.
Councilman Hart?
Yeah, through the chair to the petitioner. Just a clarification, I agree with Councilman Hersberg and Councilwoman Green when we were here a year ago, but just so I can reiterate the process, you can't even get letters of commitment until the zoning changes. So for me to ask you to bring me letters of commitment in front of the council before I approve a zoning change, it's kind of putting the horse in front of the cart, if I understand that correctly. So, so the right process is for, of course, for us to approve the zoning, then you can go in, seek your additional tenant, commitment tenants, then they will come to in front of us for a site plan approval. At that point, we would see the site- At that point, we would see the site plan approval and that's our stopgap right there. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, thank you. I too, last year, voted against this for all the reasons I stated then. What I'm hearing tonight is that, and I think it was a verbal commitment, you're not going to build anything until you know you have a tenant in there because you can't get funding, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilman Londo?
Thank you. I went back and watched the previous meeting. I actually was in attendance at the last meeting and a lot of the issues that came up at that meeting came up tonight as well. I had two questions. One, to the petitioner or Mr. Thompson, have the residents in the area been notified of this possible development and had, anybody had any issues with it?
Through the chair, the proper notification was given. We received no comments from any property owners within the area.
And I haven't received any either.
Thank you. And then the other question, it actually was asked at the last council meeting a year ago, if we did approve this tonight, and a site plan has to come before us, do we have to pass the site plan due to ordinance or if it meets the ordinance, I mean, or?
Mr. President, I guess in general, Councilman Londo, the answer to that would be yes. If a site plan comes before you and it meets the ordinance requirements, the ordinance, that section of the ordinance indicates that you shall approve it. So, yes, that is a true statement.
Thanks. Are there any other questions? Councilwoman Green?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to piggyback on Councilman Hart's comment. The petitioner was able to get commitment letters without the zoning a year ago. The packets that we have in front of us actually have commitment letters and we have not yet, the council has not yet approved the rezoning. So I just wanted to make it clear that you can, in fact, as the petitioner, get commitment letters to reassure this council and the citizens of Westland that you do have viable tenants for the building. And again, I think it's, I mean, it sounds like a wonderful project and I'd be willing to vote in approval, but I think we should take the same position as the lender and at the very minimum, get something documented that we have strong, a strong occupant coming as soon as the, you know, the construction gets underway. And so I'd be inclined to approve if and when we have that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other discussion from the council? Councilman Johnson?
And you think you could have these letters of commitments within 30 days?
Yes.
So, Council President, I'm asking if we can amend that motion to, if we're going to approve it, to require the letters within 30 days, else we'll have to readdress it and that, we could probably clear it off the agenda tonight. He says he can get them within 30 days.
Okay.
Let me, let me just take that back a minute then. My, my, my lawyer counsel here said we, that he'd rather see it postponed for 30 days pending those letters and I would, I would move to make that part of the motion.
Okay, there's a motion to postpone?
Support.
Mr. Fasson?
I was just going to weigh in. I think the petitioner is willing to acknowledge that they should be postponed for 30 days to supply the updated tenant commitment letters.
I have no problem with that. We can do that.
Okay. So at this point, Councilman Hersberg?
Yeah, I support Councilman Johnson's motion. I just think it would be a disservice to the community to basically flood the market with empty storefronts, which we already have in the area. So I can't support that without a letter of intent and I would also ask to take a second look at the site plan, which you wouldn't present for quite a while, but if you could take a look at that and try to implement city sidewalks.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor to postpone and that would be until the second meeting in April, which would be?
April 16.
April 16. There's a motion on the floor to postpone. Is there support? Or I mean, is there any objection? Any, any discussion on the motion to postpone first? Any discussion on the motion to postpone? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll see you in April.
See you in April.
New business, item two, adoption of prepared resolution. Joy Children's Foundation of Romulus to apply for a special liquor license from the state of Michigan in order to conduct two fundraising events at Skatland West, 37550 Cherry Hill on Saturday, May 19, 2018, and Saturday, August 4, 2018, which will include serving beer and wine and potentially offering packaged or pre-prepared cocktail products.
Is there a motion?
Support.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item three, approval of application from Joy Children's Foundation of Romulus to apply for a special liquor license from the state of Michigan in order to conduct two fundraising events at Skatland West, 37550 Cherry Hill, Saturday, May 19 and Saturday, August 4, 2018, which will include serving beer and wine and potentially offering packaged or prepackaged cocktail products.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item four, approval of revised site plan for proposed exterior renovations to existing office building, 32932 Warren Road, northwest corner of Warren and Benoy. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations. This is Planning Department number 297 revised.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hart. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. This is the property in question. It's at the northwest corner of Warren and Benoy. It's developed with the office building that you see here. A petitioner in this case is requesting revised site plan approval to renovate the exterior of this building. It'll be a combination of a brick and stone veneer with ephes and metal accents. They also are proposing to replace existing concrete sidewalks and landscaping in and around the interior of the building. So basically, the, this is the before picture and this would be the after picture. So it's, it's quite a change to this building, I think a welcome change to this corner and as we know, will have a positive, usually domino effect and cause other developments in the area to do the same thing. So the site plan has been reviewed by all departments. No objection has been expressed, therefore approval is recommended, sir.
Thank you. Petitioner present?
Well, my name is Steve Hamadi and I'm really excited about this project and I would like to get the blessing from the council.
Councilman Johnson?
It's still on, but I did want to say something anyway. Looks great, building looks great. I understand you already have a tenant in mind. I've talked to somebody who says they're looking at getting it for a daycare center or something. I like what you're doing down there and keep doing what you're doing in the city. You're doing a good job.
Thank you. Just to clarify that, that's going to be St. Joe's Hospital and another tenant affiliated with them, Trinity Health. So it's going to be a really nice clinic for the community that they can rely on.
It's moving and move out, so.
Absolutely.
You've got a great tenant there. Thanks again, Steve.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes, I had a question for you, sir. I just wanted to confirm, are you financing the renovation or is this something that is coming through one of our city, like downtown development authorities? Is this, you, are you self-financing?
Yes, I'm financing.
Oh, absolutely. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hart?
Really quick, Mr. Hamad, again, it looks great. The building has been pretty, a little dated for a little while and on a main corridor in Warren Road, so really excited to see this. And when you're telling me St. Joe's is coming in, medical's the number one growth segment currently. So if we can capture some of that medical business, especially right here in the all-American city, I think we're doing great. So look forward, I will be supporting this.
Thank you so much.
Are there any further? Councilman Londo?
I'll just echo my colleagues' comments. Thank you for your reinvestment in the community. Building looks great and I'll be in support of it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Londo.
Any, any further discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item five, approval of revised site plan for proposed exterior renovations to Joe Randazzo's Fruit Market, 6701 Newburg Road, northwest corner of Newburg and Warren Roads. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations. This is Planning Department number 1150B revised.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hart. Mr. Thompson?
I'm just going to give you kind of the same view here, kind of a before and after. I think everybody knows this site at the northwest corner of Newburg and Warren. They are looking at exterior renovation of this building. They're also looking to enclose the existing cart return area at the south side of the building, basically creating a new entrance for, for this facility. The exterior will contain a combination of brick block, tile and glass and this is what it would look like when everything is complete. Again, this has been reviewed by all departments. No objection has been expressed, therefore approval is recommended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is the petitioner present?
Hi, I'm John Gabriel, the architect.
Does he have anything you'd like to add to Mr. Thompson's comments?
Well, I think it's going to be great. It's kind of a dated building and, you know, the stretch awnings are kind of, you know, not too good in the future, but.
Right. Thanks. Councilman Londo?
Thank you. Appreciate the investment as well. Can you give us a timeline and possible what the investment's going to cost?
We don't have a, a accurate cost estimate. We've been looking at construction techniques, you know, one of the difficulties, it's on the south side and those are the main entrances. So we're going to do it in stages. We're going to do half at a time. I think the, the cost estimate that we've been budgeting is somewhere around $200 a square foot, so put it about 250, 300,000. This will be heated and it will be nice to have the heated and air-conditioned, it'd be nice to have the carts so they're dried out in the inclement weather and keep them inside. And one of the other problems is employees working at the checkout stalls tend to have a problem with all the southwest winds coming in the open doors. So I think this will, will make it a lot better for employees and for customers.
Timeline, if approved, then I have a thing?
I think we want to get it going as soon as possible.
Any further discussion from the council? Any further discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Good luck. Thanks.
New business, item six, approval of special land use for proposed adult daycare service, 1515 South Wayne Road, east side of Wayne, north of Palmer Road. Planning Commission recommends approval as the proposed use meets the standards of the zoning ordinance. This is Planning Department number 1263A.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Londo, is there support? Support by Councilman Johnson. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, sir. This is the property. A question was asked where it is. It is on the east side of Wayne Road, just north of Palmer. It's a small office building, was most recently a law office in here. It has all of its parking and access to the building at the rear, so it actually is suited pretty well for the proposed use. It keeps all the pedestrian and, and, you know, people coming and going out of vehicles and that into the back of the building versus the Wayne Road side of the building. I think that was a concern that was expressed. You can see the site is separated from the residential by a fence. And then pretty typical uses that surround it, all on Wayne Road, a variety of commercial uses, commercial zonings. This is a colored version of the site plan, Wayne Road to the left. This is the building, all of the parking here, that screening fence at the back. Planning Commission reviewed this at its March 6 meeting, found that it meets or exceeds all of the special land use standards, therefore approval is recommended, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is the petitioner present? Yes. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, he's been doing a great job presenting the case. I can't speak, I've worked a 12-hour shift on my brain. That.
Are there any questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
New business, item seven, approval of site plan for proposed Park West Village subdivision, north side of Ann Arbor Trail, west of Merriman. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations. This is Planning Department number 2198B.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Londo, is there, supported by Councilman Hart. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, sir. This is part of the site, the westerly part of the site. Some of the council members may remember back in April of 2016, you saw a request and approved a request for a 31-lot subdivision on this portion. Obviously, that never occurred in the actual overall site of 20.76 acres is before you now. So it does include this site, which was the former Nankin Elementary. There are four homes that are in front of the property, but it also includes the Skill Center property and, and the property behind it. You see part of it here, that's the Skill Center and then its parking lot. To the east, single-family homes as well. To the north, this is the back of the overall site looking from east to west, all developed with single-family homes in the Boulevard Gardens subdivision. South, there's office uses, there's daycare center, vacant property, single-family homes. This is a site plan request for an 80-lot subdivision on the overall 20, almost 21 acres. This property is owned R-5, single-family residential. All lots will meet or exceed those minimum standards of 60-foot wide, 7,200 square feet. This is a development that will include city streets, concrete streets with sidewalks, street lights, street trees, all of the amenities that any other subdivision is required to provide here in the city of Westland. You'll see down on the Ann Arbor Trail side of the site is where their stormwater detention will be incorporated. There's one main access at the existing light, so they are taking advantage of the existing traffic light that is there for the main entrance to the subdivision, a secondary entrance off of Ann Arbor Trail. And similar to the plan that was approved back in 2016, an entrance off of Hubbard as well to provide access up and down Hubbard or up to Joy Road and down to Ann Arbor Trail. A variety of, of homes are being proposed. Let me just add to, Mr. President, that they are providing some landscaping, basically entrance landscaping along the Ann Arbor Trail side of the site. There's no landscaping requirements. This is amenities above and beyond being provided by the petitioner. They are proposing a number of homes, 12 homes exactly, or 1,300 square-foot ranches to start, all the way up to 2,700 square-foot Colonials. So there's a wide variety of home styles, different homes with numbers of bedrooms and baths, all of the home styles I think that anybody could hope for in a development of this size and this style. These will be all brick homes, as required by the ordinance. And so the site plan that is before you this evening meets or exceeds all ordinance requirements, therefore approval is recommended, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is the petitioner present?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. My name is Americo Fernandez. I'm the lawyer for the petitioner, Infinity Homes. I'm joined by Mr. Reno Suave from Infinity Homes. I'm also joined by the project engineer. If you have any questions that you'd like to ask of us, we're willing to answer.
Are there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Councilwoman Green?
Yes, I had a chance to attend the planning meeting that, when this was discussed and I recall that there were several residents within the surrounding communities when this information was presented, but I also recall that after the questions were answered, there were not any residents who attended the meeting that seemed opposed to it. Some of them actually commented in support of it after getting additional information. The homes look wonderful. I think it's an excellent investment in our community. You know, having a background in real estate myself, I'm really excited to see more residential developments and new homes coming into Westland, so I'll be supporting.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further discussion from the council? Councilman Hart?
Yeah, just wanted to reiterate, a resident did reach out to me and they just asked that I, again, just, it sounds like you will, but be good neighbors when you guys are in there doing your work, provided it gets approved. I think most of the residents back there are excited. A couple of residents are already talking about buying their, a new house and selling theirs. But one thing we want to make sure is that everybody's entitled to quiet, quiet enjoyment of their property, so if you keep the ruckus down to Adel Roar and keep the dirt out of everybody's pools best you can and be good neighbors, I'd appreciate it, okay? Thank you.
Councilman Londo?
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming out tonight, gentlemen, and for the great investment in our community. I did watch the Planning Commission meeting as well, and I appreciate you guys and all the residents for coming out. Were all these questions that are in our packet and that they asked us that night, were those addressed? I don't know if that's through the chair to the petitioner or through Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I can answer that. I think that they were. I think most of the concerns we heard were typical concerns when new development is occurring, you know, behind older development, and I think their engineer did a really great job of explaining drainage and, you know, how the site's gonna be developed. I think the only outstanding factor is fencing, right? You have a variety of fencing types, you have gates, you don't. And so, the Planning Commission just asked that the petitioner get with each and every one of those individual homeowners that had some concern about what's gonna happen to the fence, you know, what about my gate? I think, you know, because it's not really a site plan issue, the petitioner spent quite some time that evening, I think, speaking with actually every one of those persons out there, but we've had some experience with these developers. We know they do act as good neighbors, and they will follow through with any of those homeowners that had specific questions about fencing, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I just want to say it's a great-looking plan. Thank you for doing it in conjunction with the R1 standards. It makes our job a lot easier up here, and so, good luck. Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
New business, item eight. Approval of site plan for proposed equipment storage yard, 6123 Hicks Road, west side of Hicks, north of Ford. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations. This is Planning Department number 2208.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, is there support? Support by Councilman Hart. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, sir. This is property in the heart of our industrial area on Hicks Road, north of Ford Road. Mostly industrial uses in our industrial parks, some industrial uses on Hicks Road that you see here. But this is a site plan approval request for development of this site with a construction vehicle storage yard. The site will have paved access into and around the site for emergency vehicle access. It will also have paved parking in this particular area, 12 off-street parking spaces, one driveway entrance to that use at the south side of the site. The site will be screened on all sides by an eight-foot-high screening fence, as required by the ordinance. Whenever you store anything outside besides licensed motor vehicles, it does have to be screened, and that is proposed, as well as stormwater maintenance management is part of that. All the other site amenities, landscaping, all those issues are all in the site plan. The site plan that you have meets or exceeds ordinance requirements, therefore approval is recommended, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is the petitioner present?
Abu Datiya Wusolay, Construction Representative, Mr. Jim, he's the owner of the property.
Is there any questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
New business, item nine. Approval of voucher.
Is there a motion by Councilman Hersberg, is there support? Is there support? Support by Councilman Johnson? There was a question on an item. Mr. Smith?
Through the chair to Mr. Graham on the life insurance question. Throughout the vouchers, there are life insurance charges to all the individual departments, and those are for the current employees within that department. And because there's 10 different contracts and/or pay plans throughout the city, I do not have the specifics on the benefits for any one of them with me.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to citizens' comments or requests. Citizens will be recognized at the end of the meeting immediately following the agenda item approval of vouchers. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. All citizens wishing to speak will be heard. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say my name is Coleman Alexander Young II. I'm a candidate for Congress. I just want to say hello to everybody, and I see why Westland is the pride of Wayne County. Thank you very much.
Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Anyone else in the audience? Mr. Graham?
Richard Graham, Westland, also with Move Westland Forward. A couple, a few items. First, starting to hear some rumblings regarding our pension report and also our healthcare report, which I believe fall under MIERs. Information supplied by Stephen Smith. It looks like we're significantly underfunded. Actually, I see a couple reds in the report, which means we're, you know, underfunded based on the criteria, and it appears that we're well over $100 million underfunded. So, starting to hear some rumblings in the community about that. Second, I guess we're getting closer to budget talks, and, you know, from the Michigan Commission of Law Enforcement Standards, we had in Westland about a 23% decline in our police force, and this is active police officers, not temp workers, not some specially-associated police officers from about 2008 to 2017. That was double the state average. From 2016 till current, there's been actually an increase in hiring within the state of Michigan of police officers. I know there was some concerns last year regarding some of those police officers being under grants that stopped, so hopefully the council's starting to look at adding police officers. I know that will be possibly a strain on the budget, but we also sit on a rather large surplus that we hear during, you know, the various campaign seasons. So hopefully, we can get ourselves back to at least average within the state. Next, through the chair to Mayor Wild. The 2018 ICSC Real Estate Convention is coming up, Sunday, May 20th through to 23rd. Last year, Move Westland Forward revealed that this trip costs taxpayers around $10,000 for four people to go, including stays at high-end luxury hotels on the Bellagio and area. These included at least three members bringing their spouses or significant others, receipts and spouses' names being turned in for reimbursement, and also excessive baggage fees. For 2018, who is going on this trip from the city of Westland? Are any guests or significant others going with those people? When did a city register for the event? Last year, the city registered after the early bid special that would have saved taxpayers' dollars. What hotel and at what nightly rate will the taxpayers be paying this year? I printed out a rather large list of hotels and their rates for that convention. What are the goals, and is there an agenda meeting set up for this trip? Thank you very much.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Mrs. McKinney?
I guess this would be through the chair to the police chief. I got a call Friday from a scammer or whatever, and it said, "If you don't call back within a certain amount of time, the local cops will come out and get you. You got four violations, serious violations, blah, blah, blah." So what do you do with that? I'm sure I'm not the only senior to get it, and I'm sure there'll be a lot more. So who do we report that to? And I just ignored it, but I know that you haven't got four reports on me.
Well, you know, through the chair, obviously, that's somebody trying to commit a form of fraud. Just the biggest piece of advice we have to all seniors is, you know, IRS is never gonna try to collect money over the phone, never give your credit card information to anybody you don't know over the phone. Those are just, those are people that are gonna try to take advantage of vulnerable people, and at the end of the day, you just made the right decision. You just, you know, don't give them any information and end the call.
Oh, no, you don't know what I give them. Thank you.
Anybody on my left? Anybody on my right? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Senator Young, welcome to the city of Westland. Thanks for coming out tonight. Before I start, there was a question in the audience, was the city of Westland gonna be participating in the annual International Shopping Centers Conference, which we refer to as the ICSC? Westland's, we've participated in this for probably the last nine years, and at this point, we're still working on our strategy for this year. I remind the residents that we just hired a new economic development director, so at this point, we're taking a look to see what our strategy will be for this year. So at this point, those decisions have not been made. Council, thank you for moving forward on the several projects tonight. It's nice to see reinvestment in our community. It's nice to see the folks from Randazzo, their reinvestment there, which is a very busy corner, and it follows the recent reinvestment from Anna's House and the current reinvestment of Aubrey's, which will be opening soon in the empty Ruby Tuesday Building. So a lot of good things happening on that corner. Council, I appreciate your diligence on the property on Warren Road. Just a couple of things, as you deliberate your final decision on this, is, this is kind of a, this is one of those positions where we have a gentleman that owns property, that the way that it is currently zoned, he cannot develop it the size of the lot to the current zoning, just doesn't allow him. So at some point, I think it's fair to expect that the property owner's gonna try to rezone the property to something that he can do, so hopefully he can secure those letters of intent and meet your approval, so that's just something to keep in mind. Then just a couple of quick updates. I wanted to update the city council on the libraries, the library board's progress towards hiring a new full-time library director. They held a special meeting on Tuesday, March 15th, with the consultant who was assisting with the search for a new library director. There were 16 total applicants. The library board then narrowed the applicants to seven candidates, and the next round of interviews for these candidates will be March 20th and 29th, and they're gonna be doing this by Skype, I guess, and then they're going to narrow the field to two or three, which they'll ask to come into Westland for the final round of interviews, which should happen around the 23rd, 24th of April. So we're making a lot of progress there. I would ask you to maybe keep our current administrator, Sherri West's husband, in your thoughts. He had some medical issues over the weekend, so we know that she's got her hands full with that right now, so let's wish her the well. Thanks, everybody that participated in our Hockey Night in Westland event over the weekend. We had a blast. The Wild Wings are officially now at 0-9 facing the Red Wings nine years in a row, so our record's intact, or theirs is intact. The final score was 8-3. A lot of good things happened at night. We're still calculating the final numbers, but it looks like we'll still probably, after all the expenses were paid, probably still raise north of $10,000 for improvements for the ICE Arena. And then just a couple last things is, for those of you that enjoy using the Westland app, Westland Click and Fix, there's going to be a major upgrade happening on Major 27th. So this app allows residents of Westland to communicate directly with City Hall 24 hours a day to report quality of life issues like pothole, graffiti, illegal dumping of blade, and a lot of other things. The new version of Westland Click and Fix, and remember, this is free for anybody that wants to download it. It's downloaded, it's free on the Apple App and the Google Play Stores. The new version is gonna have a fresh new design and several new features. It's gonna be a lot easier to use, and there'll be a lot of different ways that you can interact with the city, so definitely take a look at that. Congrats to Joanne Campbell. She left a little bit earlier because she's a little under the weather, but her dedicated Westland Housing Commission staff just received their final audit on their 2017 fiscal period, and they had a clean audit with zero findings, so we appreciate the hard work that they do there. It was brought up about the budget, and per the Westland City Charter, I'll be presenting Westland City Council with the balanced budget prior to the April 1 date. So council will get you the budget prior to April 1, and I think that we've already scheduled a study session on February, on April 2nd, before the council meeting, to do an overview, and then we'll work with you to do the budget process. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Anything from the city attorney's office?
Nothing this evening.
We'll begin council comments with Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I'd like to start by congratulating the children from Taff Elementary, who came here and did the pledge with us tonight. I'd also like to congratulate the girls' varsity basketball team of Wayne Memorial High. They are one step closer to playing for the state championship, so congratulations and keep up the good work. Also, if anybody is looking for a job or to give back to the community, Wayne Memorial High School is currently hiring for a varsity football coach, so if interested, please reach out to Wayne Memorial. And March is reading month, so just wanted to congratulate all of our educators, parents, people from the community, anyone who contributes to educating our children, reading to them, teaching them. Thank you very much. Have a really blessed evening.
Councilman Hart?
Thank you. So, reminder for everyone, you've heard it on WLND, and I'd be remiss if I didn't remind everyone, this weekend will be the annual Westland Area GEC's Easter Extravaganza. It's being held again this year at the Wayne Ford Civic League. That's this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to noon. $3 for children ages 1 to 13, $2 for 14 and up, and free under 1. The Easter Bunny will be there. There'll be plenty of games, crafts, and all kinds of fun stuff for the kids to do, and it's always a big show-up, so please bring the kids out if you've got nothing else to do. A reminder that yard waste pickup is about to happen again. So compost season starts April 2nd. Compost collection will begin this, April 2nd this year. Compost is garden waste, grass clippings, hay, straw, leaves, pruning debris, brushes, shrubs, and tree branches. Branches are to be cut into small bundles and ties with rope or twine. You may put out to 10 bundles per week. I usually hit that limit. You may also use compost bags or garbage cans from compost disposal. The limit for compost collection is 10 compost bags or five garbage cans weighing less than 50 pounds. Compost is picked up the same day as regular trash by a separate truck. Your compost should be separated from your regular household trash by at least four feet. Mixed compost and trash will not be picked up, so don't put your trash in the compost bin and your compost in the trash bin, and keep it separate so they can come and get it. It's always nice to keep a little separater, you have your recycle bin too, so you don't want to jam them all up, and it gets hard for the machine to come by and pick them, so keep them separate so that we all know what's going on. With that, I wanted to, again, recognize the mayor kind of stole my thunder. You see the domino effect, that's what's going on over on Warren and Newburgh. Anna's House came in, and they actually, that was the first domino to fall. Anna's House came in, turned out a great business. They've been hugely successful here in our city. Right after that, the Aubrey's development, and now Randazzo's is continuing to invest. So we have a lot of opportunities where we can go ahead and approve some things and get some things done, and then we can watch how that grows in the surrounding community. So really excited again to see the reinvestment in the area. Thank you, have a good day.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes, thank you. Just real quick, Mrs. Campbell did leave. She gave us an update on progress on the CDBG. She's doing a fine job over there. I will call her tomorrow, Mayor, and let her know if you could share that with her in the morning. I'm sure you will see her, but it's amazing the things that are going on over there. That's all, thanks.
Councilman Londo?
Thank you. Sound like a broken record as well. I want to thank all the developers and investors for their interest in the city of Westland, and so, citing time right now with all this reinvestment. And I also want to thank everyone that attended the Mike Madonna ICE Arena Friday night. I was the emcee, and I still have a voice, so thank you. And I want to talk about the school safety meetings at John Glenn High School and the school administration's office. They also had it at Stevenson Elementary, Stevenson Middle School, and Wayne Memorial High School. I attended three of the four meetings, and they came after schools were closed for a day last month after there was a threat discovered on social media, one of many that have happened since the Parkland, Florida tragedy that left 17 people dead. I just want to, again, thank the administration, Mayor Wild personally, and Chief Dedrusik, was at every single one of them answering questions, along with the school administration. They were also providing resources and taking the parents' feedback, so I want to thank the parents and students also that came. I want to let everybody know the golf course opens up April 1st. Now that we're officially in the spring season, many of you can dust off your clubs and dust off your golf shoes and be just in time for the opening of the Westland Golf Course. I want to remind you that- I want to remind you that every Monday is Monday Madness at the Westland Golf Course. You get lunch and a nine-hole game special, and you can always find out more by visiting our website, cityofwestland.com, or you can call the golf course directly at seven-three-four-seven-two-one-six-six-six-oh. And while we're talking about Parks and Recreation, the Wayne Westland Soccer League is looking for coaches for their in-house league, U-six to U-eight this spring. It's a great way to help out the community and interact with young soccer players. You don't have to know much about soccer, they just need somebody to get out there and be role models to these kids, and they can teach you the coaching. If you want more information, you can email A-Raymond, R-A-Y-M-O-N-D, at WWSLSoccer.com. And then lastly, I just want to talk about the smoke detector program. Again, I want to thank the fire administration and the FEMA grant that we received. Many of you probably have been receiving these pamphlets in the mail. If you haven't, you should. You're getting them any day now. I also have some with me. It's a great opportunity to protect your house, and the fire department will come out and do a fire safety inspection of your home and put a smoke detector. I'm not sure if they'll put multiple, they'll put multiple smoke detectors in your home, and they'll do the installation for you. They do come with a ten-year lithium battery, so no need to change those batteries every year when the time changes like last week. If you want more information, you can go on the city's website, you can visit the fire administration at three-seven-two-zero-one-Marquette, or, again, I have some of the applications right here. I'm not sure if it's picked up some, but we're just trying to get the word out there to everyone. They have ten thousand smoke detectors, so let your neighbors know, and I'll be taking a couple pretty soon. I got mine yesterday, so I think that's all I have tonight.
Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you. I'd just like to welcome State Senator Young. Thanks for coming out, taking an interest in the community and showing your face. I know you're a candidate, so we appreciate not being ignored. There's plenty of candidates out there. And then thank you also to Mary McLendon for the update about the jail project. I would hope that this election season coming up pushes some of those commissioners to strike a deal, and we can get that property to stop being a burden on the taxpayers. That's probably going to be the number-one thing people are talking about during the election season for that race. And then just going back to the proposed rezoning for the strip mall, I have more concerns than just the letters of intent for people to lease these spaces. I mean, there's traffic issues, sidewalk issues, there's other empty strip malls up and down Warren. I just, I can't support it. And, you know, it's mentioned that this property is unusable, maybe we're inclined to rezone it. I don't think that's the case. There's plenty of unusable properties throughout the city. There's many people who own parcels behind the Hawthorne Valley. We're not inclined to do anything for them, so we don't need another strip mall to sit empty.
First, I'd like to start by thanking the students from Taff Galway Elementary for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. The mayor had mentioned the budget overview study session will happen on April second, and then we will have Saturday morning budget study sessions with the various departments beginning on Saturday, April seventh, and go April seventh, fourteenth, and twenty-first on Saturday mornings. So there'll be opportunities for the council to hear from the departments directly on what's in their budget and ask questions on the budget. And then finally, just another event that's taking place later this week, on Friday, March twenty-third, the Rotary is having one of their fundraisers, a luau party, and that's at Join Manor, beginning at five-thirty, and if you need ticket information, you can go to their website, westlandrotary.com, and get information, more information about the event. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?